And then we've got a one year old.
All right.
Yeah, it's all right.
Well, let's put it this way, and you know how to run them. You've been down that road before.
This one's been fun.
It's the first time the both of you get to sound like me.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our planning commission meeting for April the 11th, two thousand and twenty-three. All the planning commissioners are available tonight in here with the exception of Ken Anderson and Amy Ann Spires, both of which have been excused. This is the time in our meeting where we invite anybody who has come to the meeting that isn't on the the schedule to stand and say anything that they have to present or make any comments to the commission. Do we have anybody here for that? All right, then, we will go straight into presentations and reports. Mr. Eggit?
I just want to note that we do have a new planning commissioner, Randy Poulsen, joining us. He's been ratified by the the city council to be an opposition, and Mayor Mitchell has appointed him, so we welcome him. He gave a brief introduction during the work session and at last city council as well about his background, and we're happy to have you with us, Randy, and look forward to hopefully many years of service with you on the planning commission. So thank you for joining us.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'd like to recognize our forming former planning commissioner, who has been with us for many years, Blair Jones, who is here tonight and who we appreciate so very much. And I would like to say, Blair, I especially want to thank you for the help that you've given me. You've been wonderful, and I appreciate it so much. And we can turn the time over for this to our mayor, Braden Mitchell.
So I know that Commissioner Jones didn't do this, serve all this time to get this recognition. In fact, we kind of had to drag him here tonight, so that's just not his style. But we appreciate him coming, so we could at least recognize him. We were kind of discussing how long he's really been on there. To be honest, he doesn't actually remember, because I was on here pretty close to fifteen years ago, and he was already a pro by then. So it really could be nineteen years. We're really not sure. But it's been a really long time, and Chairman Eskelston thanked him for, you know, sharing some guidance and stuff with her, and he did the same thing for me. I served as the chair for a while, and Commissioner Jones was always there. He had just a wealth of knowledge. I mean, just an amazing guy. And to serve for that long on the planning commission, you guys know what it takes and the time that you devote to it, and it's it's a thankless job. Nobody even knows you're on the planning commission, and nobody cares. You do it because you love it, because you love Riverdale. And, you know, I got to be honest, I've asked a couple of people if they'd be willing to serve on the planning commission, and they said, well, what does, you know, what does it entail and stuff? And I would tell them and stuff, and they would think that was pretty cool, and then they would start thinking about it. And, oh, man, I just got a lot going. I don't think I could commit to that. So to commit to that for somewhere between fifteen and nineteen years is pretty dang cool. That's that's quite a bit of service. And and he was just sharing down there, down here with me, that he's the one that helped Mayor Burrows come up with the idea to do the trash pickup that we all enjoy and benefit from so much. I guess South Ogden used to do it, and Commissioner Jones had seen that. And so he said, hey, could we get some dumpsters around? It started out, the long timers would know, we started out getting dumpsters, and you'd take your stuff there. And for several years, we did that, and then we ended up going even further to where we go around and pick up the waste twice a year. What a great blessing. I mean, that alone is a legacy. So I know a lot of our residents benefit from that. He's seen a lot of changes over the last, you know, twenty years as he's been on the planning commission. He's guided us through huge redevelopments. The city's changed a ton. And so, anyway, I just want to thank him. I'm going to miss him. He's been a fixture. Like, he has been on the, he's been here longer than any of us. Well, we're close. I mean, the guy's been coming down here twice, twice a month and sitting in a seat, you know, and doing his job pretty much longer than any of us. So I just think that's just an awesome thing. So I'm sure he doesn't want to say anything, and if he does, I mean, please.
No, I just want to say thanks to everybody.
We have a
Thanks for everything you do.
We have some of your, we have a couple. Let's see, we've got your commissioner plaque, and we also have your chairman plaque for you. Let's see, and then we have a little gift for you. This will be like a personalized pen for you, Blair Jones, and it has your planning commission dates on there. So just once again, thank you so much for all the time. You you do have some connections with the city. If you have any thoughts, please reach out. You have a wealth of knowledge, and it'd be a shame for it to just go to waste sitting in the house somewhere and not share your thoughts if you see something that needs attention. So thanks again, Blair.
Thank you.
And there you go, and let's give him a round of applause.
Anybody like to add anything?
I would. Just like to real quick note, Blair, if you need to reach us for any ideas you have, I know you you know how to reach me. You've done it before. Don't hesitate to stop doing that just because you're not on the planning commission. We value your input. I know you have a lot to say, and you understand a lot about land use. So I think your input, like the mayor said, I echo it. It's very valuable, and it'll continue to be valuable. If you see something, and you're just like, Mike, what's going on with this? Give me a call. We'll talk about it, okay? But I do, I do want to reflect what's been said by Kathy as well. I came here myself. It'd be, it's about ten years. That's crazy. Ten years this month, and Blair was on the planning commission, and we got to know each other pretty quick. I believe at the time you were the vice chair or the chair. I don't know which. Vice probably, and Brent was the chair, I think, right? But anyway, again, getting to know Blair and Brent at that time when I was new to the city was was invaluable, and it gave me a lot of confidence to know that you knew what you did about the city and about codes. And I really appreciated that, because it gave me the comfort to know that I was was working in a sophisticated city that knew what they were doing. And so you're part of that. You reassured me in that, and I wanted to say thank you for that and helping me to feel confident in doing my job when I first came here. So and obviously, thank you for what has been said about even over the ten years, all your commentary and participation that you provided. You've been invaluable to the city, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
All right. Good luck, Randy. You could stay around a long time.
Big shoes to feel.
Okay, we need to. Anybody have any comments or changes they'd like to add to the consent items for the minutes from March the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three? Okay, with that, yes?
I move that we approve the consent items.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you so much. Action items. Number one, consideration of conditional use permit required requested for proposed body art tattooing parlor studio property use located as in a suite in at approximately seven twenty West Riverdale Road within the Fifth Avenue salons as requested by Jayden Bell.
Does it matter that it's seven fifty west?
Seven fifty west is the address. That's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's a mouthful.
I'm not seeing Will.
I know it's a mouthful.
Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. I'll just cover this really quick. One of the three ladies, I believe it's maybe the one with the white shirt is Jayden. That's Miss Bell. I have talked to her over the phone, and she also sent me a quick one, one line statement of the type of tattoo studio uses is expected for this property use. But going that direction, if you look at the application, it's all all in order. She did provide us with a site plan of the space and where the the uses are that she has access to as part of her use. She will also be doing nails and lashes in there. She paid the fee. Commentary from staff. There are no concerns or comments noted by any of the departments, be fire, police, public works, myself. She did note, just a response, fine line tattoos or regular body art or tattoos just on a smaller scale. So I suspect that means too that they probably wouldn't be do a really, really heavy level of detail or involve a whole lot like a full scale tattoo would be. That's kind of the sense I get from it. You'll see that the uses per ten dash ten eight dash four in the C three, which is the zone of this this building, Fifth Avenue Salons. It's conditional, so that's why we're here tonight. The standards for conditional use permit approval are found on ten dash nineteen dash five, articles A through G. That's on page seventeen in your packet, if you're curious what those standards are. Bottom line is, what you're looking for is, does it have any detrimental impacts on any of the neighboring businesses around her use? Clearly, it's a whole bunch of other studio salon uses. We already have approved a couple of other tattoo uses within this building that are cosmetic in nature. So I don't, I don't, from a staff perspective, see any comments or concerns noted, but that is what your kind of basis of review is, and you can look at, again, articles A through G, glance through them, and see if there's anything else that stands out to you. Clearly, the building is an overall larger office building, so the parking is is well established for this building and the multiple users there. And so that, there should be no concerns that way. And obviously, where it's so insular inside of a larger building, there really, there's really no detrimental impacts to what's around it, which is kind of nice, because I think the code sometimes is looking more for like a standalone tattoo use that would be in a building that's really prominent and, you know, visible, and there's all these others around it. And that's not what we're talking about here. So that's, that should hopefully give you another level of security with the insular nature of what's being requested. But but absent me trying to say too much, I'll defer back to the planning commissioner, so you can discuss the merits of it and maybe invite her to come up if you'd like to and see where it goes from there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come forward, please, to the microphone and state your name and your city of residence?
My name is Judy Bell. I reside in North Ogden.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Can you tell us once more, your tattoo is more cosmetic than anything else, correct?
Yeah, so it's cosmetic, but also as well as just like smaller little piece tattoos or just very simple, like a fine, well, fine line tattoo. So nothing, honestly, probably nothing more than like three inch, very simple, fine artwork, yeah.
And so how many salons are you anticipating opening?
Just the one.
Just the one right now?
Uh huh, yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Pretty self-explanatory. Tattoos.
Yeah.
Okay, if not, then their motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request for proposed body art tattooing parlor studio property use located in a suite at approximately seven fifty West Riverdale Road within Fifth Avenue salons as requested by Jayden Bell.
Second.
Would you poll the commissioners, please?
Commissioner Poulsen?
Yea.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskelston?
Yes. And that is unanimous, and thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Just for clarity's sake, given your question, I'm a Realtor. I handle the leasing for Fifth Avenue. So I'm sure we'll be here again, but just to make it easier so that you all understand how Fifth Avenue works, this space has about thirty-two studios in it. So she's one of thirty-two, and they're all, it's all beauty. It, there's nothing outside of that.
Could I, how many of your studios are leased presently?
All of them but two.
All but?
And tomorrow, all but one. But don't tell the owner that. She doesn't know.
So when you say they're beauty, can you tell me some of the things that they've got in?
Yeah, so nails, for instance, Jayden does nails and lashes as well as the fine line tattooing. Most of our tenants are hairstylists. Most of them are. I think I have about four or five barbers in there, but most of them, most of them are hairstylists. A lot, several nail technicians, so a variety. There's, we have a tenant who does teeth whitening, so it all is with teeth whitening.
Oh, teeth whitening, okay.
All within the realm of beauty, and they're all about the size of a midsize bedroom. Maybe like ten by ten or somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, okay.
So that kind of gives you an idea. It's a well-rounded, many tenants with individual. They run their business out of their studio, so in essence, it's like a storefront, but we have common areas for clients to set in and act, just in future, because I know we'll be back.
So none of these, none of these areas interfere with the other area?
No, they're all self-contained. They have their own shampoo bowls inside of their studios and, yeah, all self-contained.
Can I ask you why you chose Riverdale? Just curious.
Well, she's the owner. This is Judy Young.
Yeah, Judy, I'd like to hear just.
Hi, I'm Judy Young, and I am the owner of Fifth Ave Salon Studios. And my first building that I opened was in South Ogden, which still is existing. I have another building also in Leighton. Both of those buildings are completely full and occupied, a hundred percent occupancy. And after I opened the one in South Ogden, I had been looking at the property. It's right across the street behind Wild Wings, Buffalo Wild Wings. And I'd been looking at that, and I just thought it was absolutely beautiful, and I went up and saw the space, and it just seemed so perfect. And it took me a little over a year, I think, to get that that lease negotiated with the owners and then put it together. And so basically, what Fifth Ave Salon Studios is, is like, this is the future of the beauty industry. There's still like regular salons out there where you're going to go get your haircut, and you'll see several stylists who work very in close proximity to each other. In this business, I've leased over sixty-four hundred square feet in the building, and then I've broken those down into smaller spaces, and they each have their own entrance, much like an office building. And so they're all independent business owners that operate their business behind that door under the umbrella of Fifth Ave Salon Studios. We're very fussy about our tenants and, you know, certainly the standard of who we want to see within our business. And certainly, coming here, I have a lot of confidence in being able to tell you what we're looking for with our tenancy in Riverdale. I love this space, and I hope I'm going to be there for a long time, and I can answer any other questions if anybody has one.
So each of the individuals in these cubicles all have their own license?
Yes, and they all have their own city license with Riverdale. And most people don't. The only time that you need like a conditional use permit is the tattooing situation. They have to be cleared by the Health Department first and then be able to present that to the city and then, you know, be able to determine whether you guys are going to let us have another one in there. And so far, we've had a lot of the tattoo artists who are coming to this area are looking for a space just like this that is upper class and how they run their business and the clientele's that they have, you know, are not the typical tattoo situations that you might see driving, driving down the street or in a dark alley somewhere. It's not like
Do you have any other cubicles in the other areas that are tattoo artists also, or is this the first one you've opened?
No, I think, I think you guys have approved either two or three other tattoo artists that are still in the building and working, and we've had absolutely zero problems with any of it at any, any point in time.
So you don't have any in South Ogden where you started your Fifth Avenue?
Yes, I do have a permanent makeup artist, which is tattooing, but it's permanent, like eyeliner or eyebrows. I also have that in my Leighton Studios, although Leighton, we're not zoned for tattoo artists there. So they'll let us do permanent makeup, but they won't let us do tattoos.
Across the street, we can, but not.
Yeah.
Literally across the street.
That's not fair, huh?
But it's been pretty phenomenal. I think we have a close to thirty studios within Fifth Ave Salon Studios, and each one of them are an independent business. And have, you know, I just think it's amazing that you can walk into a building and there's thirty businesses of the same industry, and everybody gets along and helps each other and has great clients, and they're happy to be there. They love the Riverdale location as well.
It's come a long ways over the years, tattoo parlors, from a negative perspective to where it's at today, you know, which is good. Our youngest son just got one, and, you know, it's a different thing. Back in the old days, it's a different perspective than it is today, and I'm glad to see that it's going to be a good addition to the city.
Yes, and thank you for making that point. Thank you.
I've kind of seen both sides of how it's transitioned from negative to the positive. It's nice to know it'll be in a positive fashion in the city.
Yes. And I don't put up with any nonsense, just so you know.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Michelle?
For the record, say your name.
South Ogden. Kristy Bell and I reside in South Ogden.
K R I S T Y?
It's actually C H R I S T Y, and Val like Victor, V A I L.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And I'm Judy Young, and I reside in Pleasantview. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes that part. We now have.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, action item number two, presentation and discussion of twenty twenty-three legislative session. Outcome bills affecting land use and associated city codes is found in Title X of the municipal code. Mr. Eggit?
All right, let's see if I can keep you entertained or at least occupied long enough to get through all this. I will say, this may end up be the first and more to come as I get more information. This is their first shot over the bow on this thing. There's a couple of other things that I anticipate coming, and I'm hoping to get some model codes to work with so that I can do a lot of the lake work for the planning commission. So I'll do eighty percent of the work, and then you help me do twenty percent to get us to a final product. So that's what I'm hoping to do. With that, you'll see that this was presented by the Utah League of Cities and Towns and APA, which is the American Planning Association of Utah. As part of this, I held the, or I attended a virtual training last Wednesday for this, about an hour and a half long. Go ahead, and would you go to the next slide, Michelle? So you notice on that statement, they, there were, for local land use planning and administrative bills, thirty-five bills were introduced and nineteen passed. And you can see it says three hundred and eighty-eight lines of code were added to Ludma. Ludma is the Land Use Development Management Act for the state of Utah, so it guides all land use in the state of Utah. It's basically their version of Title X. But they add three hundred and eighty-eight new lines of language that were not previously in the code. So think about that in all sections of code. That's what we're talking about. So that, that's that, and then you can, you can see there's a quick link there if you want to go to ulct.org backslash rap. If you're curious, you can look at their wrap-up version of all the bills and their summaries of that, or you can scan that QR code real quickly before we move on, or it's in your packet. Okay, Michelle, would you go to the next slide, please? So this one's kind of interesting. This is showing what we thought we might be facing prior to the session starting, and Kathy got a taste of this at last year's Utah League of Cities and Towns conference when she went. They were threatening to codify the general plan and make it actually a legislative tool that you could be taken to court for if you didn't follow the terms of your general plan. So they would no longer make it a recommendation or a guiding document. It would be a legal tool that you'd be held to follow in how you plan your community in the future. Thank goodness we dodged that bullet, but that's the kind of discussions we were, that we were hearing them talking about. They, or them mandating density or development processes to the point where cities would be purely checking boxes as directed by the state. Thank goodness we didn't get there, but that's what it was discussing. And so you can see where we ended from, from Utah League of Cities and Towns. This was their perspective. I, I have a bit more of a pessimistic view of where we ended up than they do, but that's what they feel like, I guess, given the threats that were levied at the beginning. It's a better place where we ended up, but it's still unfortunate where, in my opinion, we ended up. So, next slide, please. So on this one, says we plan for housing. This is what's real interesting. The legislature has been, been quote-unquote threatening or pushing this agenda probably for the last three or four years. And you'll see what's happened is one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and four permitted houses have been issued since January of two thousand and nineteen to January twenty twenty-three. And if you note the comment, they added, "Local governments in Utah have permitted more housing units in the past four-year span than any time in recorded history." So think about that, that statistic, what that says, how the communities are responding to the pressure from the legislature. But unfortunately, the legislature still wants to keep applying more pressure, which is really interesting. So there's clearly a, there's a disconnection somewhere with what the legislation feels needs to happen versus what is happening boots on the ground. And we as cities with the Utah League of Cities and Towns don't have to demystify that relationship.
I, I'm, this has, it's probably moot, the question that I'm going to ask, but isn't it more the, the developers? I mean, I can't recall us turning down any developments in Riverdale that
It's, yeah, it, how do I say this? It's not the same in every city to that first comment, but at the same time, it's not just the city's responsibility to turn out units either, nor is the city proactively able to develop housing units. So, so, so do your comment, there's, there's a negative to the city side, and there's a negative to the developer side of that very comment. Both sides are kind of at fault to some extent. Now, we're not a bad behavior city, but there are those that are. And in all fairness, they do exist, and then that's probably, you, as you probably all have seen, the legislature unfortunately has an individual that sponsors a bill based on a bad experience. They know personally or someone that they care about has dealt with, and then they push legislation forward. And other people say, I know someone in the same boat. So what I'm trying to communicate with that is more and more cities act badly, and if there's more rhetoric that there's bad behaving cities, then the thought is all cities must behave in badly, which is not true either. It's a logical fallacy, but here we are, right? Just like we say, well, developers need to do more. They may be doing enough, maybe just not in the right city, so we don't see it. But again, we're kind of held at the mercy of the developers bringing product forward, to your point.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so out of those that are permitted, one hundred and eleven, seven hundred and seven are now entitled. Local governments in Utah entitled record numbers of housing units that await building permit applications. So, so if you add those two together, you're talking two hundred and, what is that, two hundred and forty-three thousand housing units in the form of permitted or entitled documents over the last four years. That's huge, right? And we're, we're trying to add to it as a city as well, but again, there's a weird disconnect. So, next slide, please. This one, the only thing I'll note on this is that our, our representatives have attended National APA and National League of Cities conferences and talked to other state representatives. And what most of, what many of the other states from other, or other representatives from other states are saying is their states have created these hard-nosed, state-issued reforms, thou shalt, you will, we dictate housing, et cetera, type policies, straight out, no collaboration, just you will do. And, and our legislature has attempted or tried, again, I have a more pessimistic view, but from the league's perspective, they try to be more collaborative in these discussions, so they don't have to do it to that level. Next slide, please. So you'll see here, these are headlines from other states, Washington, California, Colorado, Arizona. And if you look at the nature of all those headlines, you can see exactly what we're talking about. That, that's real world headlines of what's going on in those states and how the states are taking power away from the local jurisdictions. I mean, the one that stood out to me was Huntington Beach, which is a city, was sued for violating state housing laws. The state itself said, you're violating what the legislature said you can and can't do by trying to push back and dictate how housing is in your city, and you don't have that right. We don't want to have that relationship. We don't want to go there. That's bad. Because then, no matter what the residents of a community feel, doesn't matter anymore. What's good for one city is good for all cities, is what the state does in those situations. So California has created precedents that now, and thinking about how big California is, every city is subject to what California says goes, whether you're in South California or North California, and they're very different areas of the state, right? Yet they're all subject to it. That's why we don't want that, because what's good for Southern Utah is not good for Northern Utah. Same precedent. So, next slide, please. So moderate income housing element. This is the first one. So you, you probably all remember that fun, fun, moderate income housing document that, that we reviewed back, and I believe it was maybe August or September before we took it to the council and for their review. But we outlined all of the techniques we would employ that were allowed to grow moderate income housing. Well, the original plan for reporting was for it to be updated with a report in October first after it was certified. We did get certification in January finally, after being deemed for a few words, believe it or not, that were missing in the original document we proposed. They, they said we were not compliant for a few words, and I'm not kidding when I say that. It's like five or six words made the plan not compliant. So I adjusted five or six words very specifically. I, I guess I take that back. It was five or six words, and I had to add some timelines, some, some, some determinative timelines of when some of these would be in effect, or what we anticipated them to be in effect. They've changed that now, reporting up to August first. They moved it up. So August first, every year now, in order to accommodate the Department of Housing to do an annual report, we have to, we have to report in August how our selected strategies are basically faring. And two weeks ago, I attended a presentation on this, and during that presentation, even though it's not really anywhere really clear, clearly spelled out on the And two weeks ago, I attended a presentation on this. And during that presentation, even though it's not really anywhere really clear, clearly spelled out in the bill, the Department of Housing representatives said. It's in our best interest as cities to show legitimate progress in at least two of the strategies. So that the legislature doesn't look at our city as not complying, which has never been communicated before. And it was kind of shocked all the cities. What that's code for is if you can't show legitimate how, moderate income housing growth and opportunities in your community in at least two of your areas. You're going to become under heightened scrutiny by either the Department of Housing and/or the state legislature. That's how I took that. And I think that's how a lot of cities took that. And there was some pushback. We originally thought it was more benign than that. And it was just send out, tell us your strategies and show us annually how they're progressing. But now it sounds like they want something measurable and discernible, at least in two of the strategies, showing some kind of progress. So.
Very small.
But I, I did put in eight strategies on purpose to give us maximum flexibility to show exactly what they're seeking in the event they try to do this. So at least we created some, some escape hatches to make it a little easier. That doesn't mean that it's going to be easy. So I'll do the best I can reporting. I believe I have to take it to the planning commission first, present it to you, and then take it to the city council. And actually, no, they, they stripped that. Never mind, I take that back. I will still as a courtesy. But now you just have to report by August 1st as an administrative submittal. I forgot they did take, originally you had to take it to council, present it. You no longer have to. Because of some of the timing factors that came in the first round when they learned. But it still was encouraged that we at least report to the council and at least an email and/or a more of a formal presentation. So. That's that. Now, you have, it's a five-year implementation timeline. What that means is they'll look at it at the end of five years. They'll, they'll do a comprehensive study of everything housing and community development has done in all the cities and say. Yeah, this has worked. We're going to drop this requirement or this isn't good enough. We're going to start to even do more restrictive things and/or punish cities that are bad behaviors. So that's, we don't know what that looks like, but that's what we feel like the future of it will look like over the next five years as this thing plays out, this process. There is an appeals process, but this is the weird thing about appeals process. So. You can do one of two things. You can, you can submit a plan or a report and you can be told you have non-compliance and then you can try to cure, or you can appeal. If you appeal and lose your appeal, you can't go back and, and cure your non-compliance. So you have to choose whether you're going to appeal and lose and then be, be called out for being in non-compliance and be basically penalized. Or you can cure your non-compliance, but you can't do both. You can't appeal on good, good merit, see how it goes, and then try to cure it as non-compliance if you fell in your appeal. Which is kind of weird, but that's what they did. And, and it feels, the lady tried to say, well, it's not punitive in nature. They're trying to make sure you really strongly believe in your appeal if you're going to appeal, but it feels punitive. There's no other way to put it. So some of the, the penalties would be that we would lose funds through the department of transportation. That are available for road infrastructure improvements and are, and, or other state funding mechanisms. And there's also a daily penalty that would have to be paid to the Olney Walker Modern Income Housing Fund by cities who are deemed to be non-compliant. So that, that's what they put in there. So now there's financial penalties as well for not being in compliance. So there's the moderate income housing element update for you. Next slide, please. Okay, general plan modifications. The first one doesn't matter. We don't have a transit station. Consultation required division of water rights and preparation of water use and preservation element. This one is just that. When we prepare in our general plan modification, the, the water usage and reservation, preservation element. We need to make sure that we also provide a copy of the division of water rights so that they can make sure that we're down the right track. The good thing is we've hired a professional team through our, our grant, SOMAS, to do this work and they know these policies and procedures. So I, I'll have a conversation with our, our team that's doing that, but I, I'm not concerned about it. But basically it comes back to again, that water, how you can provide water to your community for the foreseeable future has to be explicitly spelled out in your general plan. And that was a bill that was passed last year. This is just saying, we now have to make sure we're clearly making it, making it known to the division of water rights, how we do that. So they can again, look at it from a larger perspective on a state level. The, the SB 27 is simple, requires some middle of comprehensive general plan amendments to AOG. AOG is the very group that provided us with the grant. So that's going to be easy. They helped pay for it. So they're going to have access to our documents. So that one's easy. But were we not doing that, if we did a comprehensive, like the entire general plan like we're doing, and they weren't involved, we would just have to give them a copy within 45 days. Okay, next slide, please. This is the big one. This is the baddie. Subdivision approval process, SB 174. This is the painful one. And I say that because this is the one I thought I knew was going on and my mind was blown even more so on what has to happen. It's even more involved than I thought it would be. And there's even more. Staff and procedural involvement. So it's, it's an enhancement to Ludma section 604 dot one. So that, that's, that was what was amended. We now have to designate an administrative land use authority for all subdivisions that are. One, one family, two families, so twin home or town home subdivision developments. There's only two processes you can have, which is a preliminary and final plat. And, and you, you can't require pre-application conceptual review with staff, but you can request it. But if a developer says, no, I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to submit a preliminary plat and application, you have to accept it. That's their right. And you don't, you can't say, well, we're not, we don't quite feel like you're at a point where that's smart to apply. They'll say, too bad, I'm applying. That's their right. Backing up to administrative land use authority, what that is and where that will come into play, I'll cover in a second. That is a legitimate governmental entity that will have to be noticed the same as a city council or a planning commission for any meetings they hold. They'll have a quorum composition. We determine what that quorum composition is, but it can't have a quorum of planning commissioners on it. So you can't have, in our case, four planning commissioners on it for any reason. You can have any less than a quorum. You could have one up to three in our case. And you can't have a quorum of city council members. So you could have one council member, you couldn't have three. You could have two council members on it, or you could have the mayor on it, and then obviously staff representatives. And you choose how you want your land use authority to look and you put it into your code and that's your land use authority. They're the ones that will decide on a final submittal, if a final submittal is approvable or not for a subdivision, in place of the city council and the planning commission. So that's what that is. So.
Mike, can I ask why? Like, what is their reasoning for that?
Because they feel like, for lack of a better way to say it, city council members and city councils in general are too emotional and don't have rational precedence for the decisions that they make when they deny. Applications for subdivisions and/or require things that their code doesn't allow them to require, but then the, the developer feels hostage by it. Remember I said about bad cities? And so because that, I, I have to be a little careful. I mean, we have at times seen, seen even some things in the past with council members here in, in the city. And maybe not to the level that we're seeing in other cities where it's probably pretty blatant. You know, you get some of these smaller towns that lack sophistication and they think they can say. Well, I don't like the subdivision. It doesn't have tree-lined streets. You have to put trees in. And the, the developer is saying, it's not in your code. And they're saying, well, I don't care. I want it in or you don't get approved. This process eliminates that. Now the city council can't get emotional and make comments like that because they don't have the final say. That administrative land use authority does.
You could technically put a combination of planning commission and city council together to form the land use authority, right? So that doesn't.
But it can still be appealed and you still have to follow your codes. So you would lose on the appeal to, then you're, you're basically administrative law judge. Your administrative appeal authority, you'd probably lose.
So Mike, what's a due process for the citizens?
There isn't one. I, I don't know what to tell you to that.
That's what I was thinking. I totally missed something that is gone. I know.
I don't know what to tell you on that.
There is no due process.
You're seeing it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? What about in Layton where they have all this land coming down and they're wanting to sue the city? Will the city have the right? Now, we have some places that would be unsafe to build homes in our city.
That, you would have to have an ordinance in place and we do have a sensitive land overlay zone that would dictate that. And an engineer has to sign off on it. So that's where we have our authority. This is where, if you remember, I said before, when, when the legislature ended and I've said a couple of meetings ago. We're going to have to get really strict on redoing our Title 10. This is why, because if Title 10 doesn't dictate what the standards are, the standards can't be enforced. So your codes have to be locked tight on what you expect of a project, or it's not something you can require. You can hope for it and you can do a development agreement. That's one way to fix it. You could do a development agreement, request it if they agree to it. But you can't require anything that's not explicitly spelled out in your land use codes. So if you look at the next one, a land use authority may complete preliminary plat review by staff or in public meeting, may hold one public hearing. So what that, what that's saying is a land use authority in this case is a planning commission or a city council. So what it's saying is your city council can act as the land use authority for the purposes of the preliminary plat review. In a public meeting. And you could even have your land use authority, and some cities do, not even involve the city council or planning commission for the preliminary approval. But that's the only place where the city council can get involved, is on that preliminary plat. And all a preliminary plat you would be approving is, do we like the way the project looks? Does it fit the zoning? Does it fit the general plan for this area? That's the extent of what they should weigh in on. So if and when, which we likely will, because I know city council will want some hand in it, we'll, we'll, we'll. Flip this thing upside down. We'll put them basically in a middle position. Where they'll, they'll check that and make sure staff feels comfortable with it, but that's the only say they'll have. And then they'll stay out of it when that final plat comes in. And that goes now to that administrative land use authority to review that and staff. So that is where you can hold one public hearing as part of that preliminary. But that's where I said upstairs, where we were cautioned by the attorney that's working closely on this with the league. He said, I would highly discourage you to not do. I would highly discourage doing or holding public hearings unless you feel a compelling reason to do so. That's what he said. Because the clamor can steer basically the city council and getting emotional and then act out of line when it comes to a preliminary approval, because that's not their place at that point. Again, they're checking to see, does it meet zoning? Does it meet general plan? Does it meet the will of the general area and fit in? And we're only talking about single-family, two-family and town home developments. We're not talking about apartments. So apartments still go through the irregular process. You'll still see all those. Anything that, that's R3 apartment or higher will still go through the same process. So we're going to now have two. Painful land use processes that are bifurcated and have to behave completely differently is what I'm seeing. Okay. So your final plat cannot be reviewed by the council or planning commission. I, I think, I, I have to clarify. I think he did say that, that for the preliminary, we still can run it to the planning commission and then do the city council. So if that's what we want, or we can just run to the city council. That's, that's our prerogative as a city. So we'll have to decide what makes the most sense on that. Next slide. Oh, you're already there. You're, you're where I want to be. Review of land use applications, subdivision improvement plans. So this is how now submittals work. So I talked about the process more or less. Submittals will work. They, they submit the day that they submit, then there's a timer. Within 15 days, there has to be that review by, and this is where I'm not quite sure it says initial review. I'm not sure if that means the planning commission. If you have a planning commission and then the city council review the preliminary plat, or that, that land use authority review has to be done within 15 days. And that's 15 business days, thank goodness. So that's three weeks. But if developer X doesn't want a pre-application and they just say, I'm submitting, it's a Tuesday, I have a right to be heard by your city council in three weeks. They're right. If that's how you set up your code or your planning commission, if they're your land use authority. Again, I think our city council would want to be. So if they don't get it within 15 days, they basically can appeal. The process and, and I'm not quite sure at that point how the penalties look. I don't know that we've figured that out. I don't even know the legislature. At one point, the legislature wanted to say, if you don't hear it within these many days, it's automatically approved. But the city's pushed back on that. And I think it goes to an appeal at that point, is how it's set up now. Then after the city council or the land use authority reviews it and approves it, right? Then they, they start, they can then submit the final plat with all the changes that staff has told them, maybe whatever came out of that meeting. And they have, they have, that review has to be completed within 20 days of receiving the application. And what that means is that's like your staff reviews. So all your staff comments that are really refining the document start at that point. That back and forth can happen four times. So. Let's say engineering says, do this, do this, do this. And they come back and they do it all. And then, so that's the first back and forth. But then the engineer the second time says, oh, I missed something. Do this and do this now. And they come back. You can do that up to four times. That fourth time, the whistle blows and you're done. Everybody has to be good with where it's at. Now, if the engineer says, do one, two, three, four, and they don't, they don't do three or four sufficiently to meet what the engineer's requesting. That does not count as a, a complete re-submittal. They have to cure it before it can become a new submittal. So that's one backstop that cities were able to argue for. So the engineer, the, the engineer, staff has to be basically compelled to feel satisfied the issues have been resolved to start a new official round. So that's a good thing. Advocate must respond though to required changes here, see disagree, disagrees within writing. So they have to give a written submittal if they don't agree. And those merits have to be discussed before it would be counted for a, a second review. That still has to be resolved. Lot line adjustment changes. That, that's a very minor one, but we will probably have to adjust our code just a little teeny bit for that. But anyway, that's how that works. And then if after four rounds and it goes to that admin, administer, or three or two, every minute it takes, when it's ready, if it goes to the administrative land use authority and it still gets denied for any reason. They can then appeal that. And that's where your appeal authority would come into play. And your appeal authority is the one that would overwrite the administrative land use authority at that point. And whatever the appeal authority says, that's law. Like that's, that subdivision will go whatever direction that, that administrative authority says. Unless the city wants to fight it in court. And that's where it would go next is court at that point. The appeal is, we have one individual, an administrative appeal authority. His name's Craig Call. And he's the one that reviews all appeals from the land use side of things for the city. Yeah, he's been designated for years on contract. He used to be the state ombudsman and he's, he's kind of, at this point, he's the overall land use institute. Group that does seminars and training throughout the state.
He's going to make his job a lot busier.
Yeah, he very well could see more appeals, at least from us. But every, every city has a different designated appeal authority. It can be an individual, it can be three individuals. Usually you don't see them bigger than that. It's usually one or three individuals. But yeah, we've, in all the years I've been here, I've used him once, like he's been used once on a, on a, an appeal on a, a building permit. And the city did, did lose that appeal because the code was not clear. And so we, we've up and amended that code since that point to make it more clear on a setback. Next slide, please. Here's the next.
Well, can you go back? What does that mean that the lot line adjustment changes and then it has House Bill 40?
There's two bills that affected lot line adjustment changes and how they can be applied for and how they're recorded. It's always been real murky and unclear how it works. I believe the way we do it now, for the most part, meets their intent. I can't remember because we had, there's so much information that day. But I just remember what they were talking about seemed pretty, pretty simple or, or very minimal to what we already do. So I'm not really worried about it. But it's like if you had obviously two neighboring property owners and they wanted to adjust a lot line, right? How, what was the process? What does that look like? How do you make it so it's not cumbersome for an average individual? So I'll just have to see how that applies and I may, may bring some code amendments to it, or I may just follow state code because if state code clearly spells it out, then that's easy to follow. We only have to put it in our own code.
Usually have to go through a survey.
Yeah, you do survey map is what we, the way we do is you get a survey map. We check everything with our engineer, then our attorney or city administrator looks at everything. He signs off on it saying it, it looks good. And then they can record it at the county at that point, if everything's good. So that's how you do on a, on a small, simple lot line adjustment. If it's larger than that, we'll require them to go through a subdivision amendment process.
Easement is even more terrifying.
Yeah, easements can be a little tricky too, depending on the nature of what they are. You have to get a bunch of letters and then at that point you typically have to come through the land use authority on that to remove an easement. So you'll see too, at the bottom, I didn't know this, but we have to have this. We are in the first category unfortunately because we are in a first class. I can't remember what it's called. First class county or, or county of the first class with Weaver County. So we do have to have this work done by February 1st, 2024.
They consider us a larger city.
Because of our county designation. Yeah, yep. Okay, next slide. Told you this is really fun stuff. Residential roadway limited to 32 feet pavement width with exceptions. So right now, the standard right-of-way in, in Riverdale is 60 feet. And I believe I talked to our city engineer. He said the pavement width right now for the city, I'm, I'm trying to remember what he said. I want to say it was either 36 feet or 38 feet. So what this is saying now is instead of having a typical 60-foot right-of-way where you have 38 feet of asphalt, I believe that's what it is, curb gutter sidewalk. You now have to give up six feet of your right-of-way. So your, your right, right-of-way would now is probably going to be more realistically in all subdivisions. A 50-ish, 50, 50 up to 54 feet right-of-way. I'm not exactly sure what that will look like. But they're, they're going to get it more narrow, all future subdivisions. Good news, there's not a lot to develop in, in Riverdale for the purposes of, of subdivisions. Bad news, any new subdivisions after the date of this bill being signed, have to go through that. And so we'll have to update our code. To make sure that the standard right-of-way width is limited to 32 feet of pavement. We can't require it unless by development agreement, they agree to do it wider. Or there, it's a major transit corridor. There's some wording. It's like major transit corridor with, with traffic speeds of. I, it, there's some wording, it's like major transit corridor with, with traffic speeds of thirty-five miles per hour or larger. Or it accesses a main intersection point. I think that's the way the coding is, it's something to that effect. Then you can require it be larger. But obviously if it's just a simple neighborhood subdivision. Then you can't make the asphalt any wider than thirty-two feet for their standard.
Eliminate street parking.
It's gonna make it more narrow and probably what will happen is I've talked about in previous meetings is we'll have to sign one side or the other of the road is no parking. That's probably what it's gonna lead to in all subdivisions. And we'll probably have to make that clear spelled out in the code. So the developer doesn't say you didn't tell us, yeah.
So what does the code say right now? Does our code say thirty-two?
Sixty feet, sixty feet width. And, and when I talked to the city engineer, like I said, I believe he said thirty-eight feet of asphalt. So I think it's a six foot differential is what we'll have to reduce it to.
Cause some of our subdivisions are circles are too, too narrow.
Now the cul-de-sac circle won't be affected. It still has to be fifty feet to accommodate a, a fire truck radius. It's just the road itself has to be narrowed.
So it's not the cul-de-sacs that we're talking about.
At one point they wanted to do it as narrow. At one point they want to do as narrow as twenty-eight feet asphalt. And cities pushed back and said, no way. Yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah. So we actually pushed to get thirty-two feet, believe it or not, but they were trying to get us at twenty-eight feet at one point.
But thirty-two feet, that does, that give you room on each side?
Sixteen and sixteen. No, you're probably only gonna be parking on one side or the other. And, and it also makes it difficult if, if for some reason you don't have good no parking or you have a violator. Your trash trucks, your buses, your large vehicles have hard times getting through those corridors. Your fire trucks might have a hard time getting through those corridors. So that is something that we have to really be cognizant of as we develop codes around this. Uh, water rights, that, that's one you don't need to really worry about. Um, let's see, don't need to worry about that. Bonding for landscaping only for that, then on public property, at least we're pretty good here. There's only one small area we may have to amend. Uh, as it relates to landscaping standards. We don't currently do bonding or escrow for landscaping that's on private property unless agreed to per development agreement. And that is allowed if you do it through a development agreement, but you can't require, but some cities have said. Subdivision X in the private common area will, will bond an escrow for landscaping. You, you can't do that if it's like a private park or private area. If it's public, you can. But if it's private, you can't tell them how, how they're gonna do stuff unless they agree to it per a. Development agreement as part of like a, a planner's and a unit development, like we have with Coleman view estates, they have a PRUD. And they are, they are gonna bond an escrow for their improvements, their landscape improvements. They've agreed to, so that would be allowed, even with disordinants.
Like HOAs and stuff?
Yep, it's a permitted at that point.
That's, that's nice since it's gonna be like third, uh, uh, generation before they. Do most of that anyway.
Yeah, it, it, it just kind of depends on, on how it's developed up. And that was before, uh, initially, uh. We do have a requirement on new homeowners. If they're, right now, the code says for landscaping, if they are developing. Or if they move into their home and occupied during a certain time period. When the snow is on the ground, that sort of thing, they can then enter into an escrow with the city. To cover their, their landscaping improvement until the next available opportunity over the next year, up until I think it's October of the following year. This mayor may not be impacted by this. We may not be able to do that practice going forward. And I don't know at that point how we secure and verify or make sure that landscaping gets installed during, after winter months, if we're not allowed to do this anymore. So that is potentially an issue for future homeowners that we may not be able to, to. Apply that standard to get front yard landscaping in. Up to this point, that's how we've been doing it, but we'll have to see if we're not allowed to do that anymore. And if we are. Not allowed to do that, we'll have to remove that from the code and that will be an amendment, you'll see.
So, so right now the new homes have to have the landscaping before they're approved to be.
They, they can get their, they can get a, a certificate of occupancy. It's a, a basically temporary certificate of occupancy, but they have to get that landscaping in before the snow flies. But if they move in before the snow flies, usually it's October. I think there's a date in the code. It's, it's October thirtieth, I think. If they move in, say in November or December, then the code basically gives them an opportunity to provide a cash escrow to the city. And it's not very much money. It's like two thousand dollars, just a holding for that property owner. To encourage them to install their landscaping over the next cycle, landscape, landscaping cycle until October of the following year. And then we release that, that escrow money to that homeowner. That's how it currently works, but we may not be able to based on HB four oh six this term here.
Which is really sad because there's a lot of people that move in their homes in December. I mean, if their home isn't, how do you do landscaping if it's no one?
Well, that's the thing. Can we even at that point require it if, if we can't even protect the, the right to do that for the homeowner that moves in in November, December for all the other neighbors? I don't know. That's something we'll have to figure out.
I, I can see the reasoning for this because you don't want a, a person there with a crappy lawn or a crappy yard.
This is actually the opposite though. This is taking away the city's ability to, to ensure that or secure that. The other direction and it's defaulting the property owner and do whatever they want. And the city can't hold them to it. Is what this code is talking about. Um, one thing I didn't know about, uh, going back to plan residential unit developments and that process before. With the change of land uses, it's really tricky. It's gonna be crazy. You have to now disjoint a land use process. So Coleman view estates would not run the way it is now that we, way we've done it. You would actually have to take the plan residential unit development process first through the planning commission and city council and meet its process and get the development agreement in place. Before they would even submit the su- subdivision process. And then it would go through that, uh, process. It no longer, it no longer can run concurrently. Because those processes still are in place the way they're established and they still have to go through a planning commission, city council review to get grant a PRD. Very variance or flexibility for development. And then the subdivision follows. So what that, what in essence they, the developers have done. Is made the approval of that subdivision that much more lengthy and difficult for them to achieve. They've added that many more months to their process, whether they realize it yet or not, that's the unintended consequence of this action. So that is something that they did talk about at the meeting. So it'll be interesting to see how they respond to that in the future. Uh, next slide, we're getting almost to the end, I promise, because it's, it gets easier from here. At least it, th- there's a lot less to talk about. Uh, special specialized land use provisions. There's a small tweak to development agreements. You won't see a change in the code. Probably won't affect you directly. Just know that it comes back to everything I've been talking about with development agreements. They've become the new. They've become the new, uh, sterile way to add steroids to a typical land use request. And they've befa, they've become a way that state law actually supports in going against your own city, city codes. Remember how I told you in the past, so you can, you can do it as long as you run it through a typical land use change to your ordinance with the public hearing and. Um, the, the development agreement goes through review of the planning commission. There's a public hearing element and that goes to city council. You can still do that with development agreements and you can actually alter your codes as long as everybody agrees to what's in that development agreement and gets approved as such. So that's how you flex on these things we've been talking about a little bit. Kind of crazy, but that's what they still allow. They just tighten up the way that, that works and how that interfaces with the other things we're talking about. Okay. HB two oh six and two sixty-five, this is another fun one. You're gonna see this in the general plan here shortly, um, area of influence. Area of influence, as I talked about a couple of months ago, when this bill is being discussed. Is five thousand feet from any runways that service a major airport in the, in the city and or, uh, base airport. So Hill Air Force Base runway, Ogden Airport runway impact the city. If you want to know what five thousand feet looks like, that's goes all the way down to about Kia from the airport. Everything under that bubble is impacted by this, this new zoning designation. We have to create an ordinance. That establishes a zoning designation in the standard and the standard is. That anybody who improves property or fifty percent of the residential, uh, site. Has to submit a formal letter of request with some basic information about the request to the airport. And get approval from the airport for FAA regulations in order to continue moving forward with their development request. So what I will do in that instance is I, I will create a letter. That has the contact and the information and I will provide it to any developer and say, this needs to be provided, or this needs to be. Your plan needs to be communicated to this individual who will then basically sign off on and say, we're good with it. And then once I receive that, we can allow your process to move forward on your project. So it's another, another hoop. That also applies to the base. Um, they have a bubble as well. It doesn't go to that far, but it does come out into what's already established is. The AQs and I don't have it on either of these, but it basically. The eight, the AQs comes across the golf course. And this MU, it's like, it's a rectangle like that. And then the runway bubble comes about like that. So that five thousand foot bubble. That will have the zone in it is here. The. The Ogden Airport bubble goes like this. It's, the runway is there, so it goes like this. And that whole area is impacted by it. So it's probably a good third, if not half of the city is impacted by that. So the two together probably impact forty percent of the city. So we'll have to have an ordinance that talks about that. Um, the base is worse. The base, the base has, I think up to sixty days per their ordinance. And I think the airport has, uh, or not sixty days, six months. And I think the airport has four months to make a decision. We've heard the airport will be quicker, but. That's what the, that's what the guy running the airport has told our general plan group who's talked to them, that they'll be pretty quick on turn around on those because. What they're looking for is buildings that are like a hundred and fifty feet tall, which will never happen in Riverdale. But they still have a right to. Look at everything and, and stop something they don't agree with that they're concerned about it by FAA regulations or by base regulations. So that's what that's about. Only is like going all that details because I'll have to bring the code forward. My, my guidance from the individual I talked to today about this is to do one, one ordinance that covers both. HB two oh six and two sixty-five, and I'll just addition a few extra regulations for the base as it relates to that. That noise ordinance area that, that what's called the AQs or APZ accident potential zone, one and two. So we get that more codified. That should make those both go away. All right. HB four oh eight, regulation to mobile businesses standardized. Michelle loves this one.
She loves food trucks.
So food trucks, as you remember, the state took away a bunch of authority on food trucks over there. As if you remember, we used to regulate these, we used to have. Um, processes and business licensing for all of them. And we would determine what kind of, uh, food trucks could even be in the city. That was all taken away from us. And then they took it away further and said, you can't even do it to ice cream, ice cream trucks and, and lemonade stands. And then they've taken it one step further this year and said, you no longer can regulate mobile businesses of any kind. Dog groomers, what are some of the others? Car, like car repair. Barbers, anything mobile that's on wheels like a food truck has the same rights and abilities as a food truck, which means. We can't regulate them. We can't require them to get a business license. They just have to have one sponsor city to give them business license and one sponsor fire department to give them business license. So no longer is it just a food trucks or ice cream trucks. It's all mobile businesses that are allowed this opportunity now. And not just food trucks. Every mobile business will now be able to be everywhere. Yeah, even food carts, taco carts, hot, hot dog carts. Yep. So it's gonna be, it's near impossible. They, they know what they're doing. Cities will not regulate them because it'll be near impossible to find out who's legitimately licensed and who's not. It's not even worth it at that point, in my opinion. I think Michelle probably agrees. It's a waste of time. Downside is you now don't know who to hold responsible for any kind of health concerns, safety concerns, et cetera, right? Cause you, you don't even know how to report it to the right business licensing entity. Or a fire licensing entity. So it's gonna create.
Does the health department regulate them at all?
Only the sponsor health department where they, they filed their business license in that jurisdiction. Is the health department that regulates them.
But they can't go into private property where businesses are.
Really good.
They can, sure, they can.
They can and they can't keep them off?
Well, well, with permission, they just have to have their permission, but yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, but yeah. So I guess what I'm saying is if residents start calling you and saying. Why is Joe's haircut driving through my neighborhood? Sorry, we as a city can't regulate that. It's near impossible. So.
Well, and the guy that sells tacos or.
Now, we used to be able to regulate them. We can't anymore.
Guys that come wandering to a Walmart with their tamales. You can't control that either.
Yeah, if he's tied to a food cart, but if he had a food cart in front of Sam's Club and now he's walking around the parking lot at Sam's Club doing it.
Well, his food, his food truck is his car.
That, that might not be the same thing. That's not what we're talking about.
I've seen him put them in, uh, the baskets, the Walmart baskets and pushing it around inside. The tamales inside the basket.
Do they have to have Walmart's approval for that?
They, to, as legitimate life, as a legitimate business, they would, mobile business, but. You're talking about the, the lady that's got a cooler in her back of her car and saying tamales. Yeah, that, that doesn't apply here. That's not what we're talking about. But we had it, we did have.
Walmart.
Yeah, there's no, there's no health, there's no health inspector at that point. So I would, I would highly discourage buying food if you get approached by someone doing that. We, we, we had, we have. An ordinance that regulates mobile carts. It's gonna be all redacted and removed. There's no purpose at this point anymore. We'll just keep a basic, um, business license for, probably we'll go from food trucks licensing. To just mobile business licensing and reterm it and it'll just capture everything. I think that's what, don't you?
It's a case somebody wants to use you as a sponsored city.
Yep, yeah, we'll keep it simple and it'll just be the basic, but it'll just be mobile based business. Yeah, yeah, keep it real simple, but we'll redact. What we'll bring in is a full redaction of all kinds of codes. And you may not, I don't know, mobile based businesses, I think is title three. So you wouldn't even see it. It'll go just to council, but just know it's gonna be redacted. There's no reason to have it at that point. Okay, almost there. Uh, next slide, other land use provisions. Other land use provisions, okay, so. Internal accessory dwelling units provisions for tacted garages parking. This one is talking about internal accessory dwelling units. If you remember, we did an update where. There were a bunch of zones that would allow for internal accessory dwelling units with a conditional use permit. And, and that was, uh, everything basically larger than R one eight zoning. So R one ten, R two. R one eight, or excuse me, R one ten, R two. R, um, I forget their call, RE twenty, RE forty, A one, all those zones were allowed for it. What this is saying, I guess some cities were saying you could not convert a garage into an internal accessory dwelling unit. Well, a legislator did not like that. And created a term of SB one seventy-four that says, no cities, you can't do that. They have a right to do it. They can convert a garage to internal accessory dwelling unit, as long as they have adequate parking, the parking standard, you can still establish by code. But you can't require more than four stalls per resident and internal accessory dwelling unit. So we will likely do a small amendment to our internal accessory dwelling unit to establish a parking count, but that's probably the extent of it. Cause right now, we, we wouldn't care. Had someone come to us and said, we're converting our garage. If they could do it safely and meet our standard and we brought it to you as a conditional use permit, we probably would not have turned it away anyway. But it's clearly some cities would, and that's why this bill exists. Um, another thing that, that's not defined here, but it is an, an impact to IEDUs. This one's tricky, uh, internal accessory dwelling units. We have a current code. Well, that code will stay in effect. But there's a new code now that says any, any application after a certain date for an internal accessory dwelling unit. Regardless of the single family dwelling zone shall be allowed. So I have to change an ordinance as of a certain date. If anybody applies for an internal accessory dwelling unit regardless of the zone, and I have to check that. If it's still apply like to an R one six, or if there's a square footage size or R one four point five. But if it's single family, it now will qualify as of a certain date that's established by the code. So it's respectful of this, this four or five year eternal accessory dwelling unit code we've done and the zones we've provided for it. But any new applications thereafter, no, I'm backing up any new subdivision platted. Developments thereafter are entitled to IEDU. That's what it is. So it's not any zone, it's any platted subdivisions that come thereafter regardless of zoning have rights to that. So now we're gonna have to track each new subdivision that's planted after a certain date. And make sure that anybody in those subdivisions know they can have IEDUs if they, if they desire to do it. Or if a developer wants to develop homes that accommodate that, they will automatically have the right and cities can't block that.
Would it make it into a duplex then?
No, because you can still make them owner occupied with a rental, with a renter in them. So cities can still regulate that. You just no longer can say. We don't want them in the R one eight zone or the R one six zone. If there's a newly planted subdivision, regardless of the zoning. That subdivision has entitlement to IEDUs by state code. That's what it is. It's, it's per plating. Yeah. So it, it takes out even the whole zoning, zoning doesn't even matter at that point. It's just new, any newly planted subdivisions. Are automatically entitled to IEDUs after that date. So that's what that is.
Are they gonna have minimum requirements for?
Your, your IED ordinance still applies. You just can't, you can't, you can't segregate by zoning anymore. Anything newly plaid is automatically entitled. Um, moratoriums, we don't do them a whole lot, but it basically, all you have to know about moratoriums is they're more strict now on how cities can use them than ever. Especially if they're used to target, uh, uh, subdivisions. I guess some cities were using them to basically buy time and. And drive a, an applicant out of a project by just saying, no, we're having a moratorium for a year. And the developer eventually walked away saying, fine, I don't have time and money to waste here. I'm walking away. Well, the, the state legislature said, nope, no more of those shenanigans. You're not doing that anymore. We're gonna make it really hard for you to do moratorium and you're only limited to six months. You can't do a year moratorium. You can't do one. Let it lapse and then do another one right after to, to basically drive a developer out of your city because you don't like something about them.
Heber City did because they didn't have the water for that. Heber City did because they didn't have the water for that, they couldn't build for a certain length of time.
If, if you, if you can't provide utilities, that's a different reason to have a moratorium.
Water problem.
Yeah, that's different, but this is, we're talking about somebody who says, oh crap, we didn't realize, we don't want that zone to allow for this use, let's hurry and rezone it. And then we're going to have a moratorium to buy us time to rezone it so that developer won't be able to develop there anymore. Cities were doing that and they would need sometimes up to years, legislators said, nope, we're done with that behavior, you're not doing that anymore. Yeah, and Park City, actually Campbell Junction's in a, a land use fight right now over a uh, a forced development that the state legislature gave the developer the keys to do whatever they wanted to. Anyway, you can read about in the paper, we're not affected, but it's, it's where it's called a high transit, high transit rel zone where you have some kind of a rail line that's state funded. And then the city basically doesn't develop it in a way that accommodates moderate income housing per the state standards. The developer now has rights that can prevail and supersede anything the city says in those areas. And now there's a lawsuit over that between the county and the state, yeah. So that could be a, a sign of things to come if it doesn't, if cities don't start playing the way the state wants them to. Um, I think, let's see, talked about development agreements. The last, I think, one of the last few, there's, we're almost at the end. Um, but let me focus on SB one ninety nine referendum on land use regulations prohibited, this is the one I was talking about upstairs. The, you, the residents cannot go in and pursue a referenda on any land use regulation, so that'd be in land use ordinance change, if the council adopted it by unanimous vote. Um, or a transit station area regulation, which comes into what I was just talking about probably, by two thirds vote. So it's a way to protect city council members from, from having to be afraid of making tough decisions and then being overturned by the public who's mad at it. So if the city council, if we recommend a, a land use change to the code that we believe in and the city council agrees and it's unanimously approved, even if the public hates it, too bad, you can't do a referendum to undo it. So that, that, that no longer is a tool that, that residents can use to undo something they don't like with the code. As long as it's unanimously approved by your council. Now, if it's not unanimously approved, then I guess the door is still open for referenda to be circulated. So that's what that one's about. Before, it didn't matter if it was unanimously approved by your council, a referendum could be still applied for and, and potentially petitioned and get on your ballot. Um, prohibits regulating co-owned, fractionally owned homes differently, this probably doesn't affect us as much as it would a resort community, but still good to know. I guess some cities were starting to talk about co-ownership and trying to regulate whether or not like two families could own a summer home and, and pay for it and have their names on it and that sort of thing and own it, probably more so again in the resort community down south or in Park City or something. State said, cities, you can't do that. If, if people legitimately go in on a property and buy it and own it and it's two families and they both are on title, you can't regulate it down to one, one family owning that and say that that's, that's somehow not right. So the legislatures stopped that behavior, I don't know which cities were doing it, I believe it was probably a resort community. But if ever that happened in the city, I don't think we would ever do that, but that's just another thing.
My, my daughter lives in North Ogden and right next door to her, she's got, uh, it, there's two or three families, you know, that live in the same house, they share, they share the house together. Um, I could, I could see where, you know, instances like that, you could have two or three, you know, even not in a resort area, but just in a regular.
That's true, where, where people, and, and even um, younger families or younger college students have, have been known to do this too, where you'll get two or three, they go on on a home together and they buy it together and their names are all on it.
Yeah.
And, and up to that point, there must have been cities that said that you couldn't do that, that they were regulating against that. Well, this bill says, no, you can't do that, they can, they can completely go and do that, if that's how they want to pull their money and own it, they can totally do that and that's fine.
Well, I, I've seen several places where the children have bought the home, but then they go half and half with their mother-in-law or something, and she lives in the basement.
All that.
And that's, so both their names are on the title.
I, I'd like to know what cities, how cities were trying to regulate that, because that almost just seems outright cruel, but there were probably cities that were doing it or the bill won't exist, yeah. Uh, public noticing, I'll have to dig into this more to see if it matters, I'll talk to Michelle on it too, it, it's certain land use criteria, if you go, it's a really weird one. If, if you go, don't, don't skip, uh, just go two slides forward. And it's in effect, like it says, May 3rd, that said, May 3rd, 2022, I have a feeling it was 2023. But if you look on here, this matrix is kind of interesting. So there's two forms of noticing. And the only real difference that I can discern is one of them, class B noticing says notice within designated area. Class A doesn't require that, everything else still requires a public notice on the, the public notice website, uh, a still local public body website notice, a still notice posted in the affected area. It's just a class B, as you look on that list, requires noticing within the designated area. And so what I think a designated area must be is as they've identified in that matrix, like ordinance hearings to adopt or amend, area directly affected. So if you had an, an ordinance and it was directly going to affect a zone of a city, you would have to put some kind of notice directly in that area to the public that's impacted in that area. Same for zoning map, if you were to update a zoning map and you're going to impact the area, I don't know how we'll do that, I don't know if we'll have to just put signs all throughout the city, but if we were to go and do it, we do it already, now that I think about it, on a rezone. Yeah. Um, and even then, yeah, we put a sign up in there, he's directly affected, so we meet that one already. Owner of affected property, I guess if, if you're going to do a zoning map change to an owner of affected property, it's got a star, I don't know what the star means. I didn't, maybe that's if your ordinance requires it.
I think everything's an A or B unless it's got other specifics.
I think the stars, I, I think it's if your city requires it, we don't require it. But if we did require it, it probably would be required to every, every property owner affected by that zoning change. And then planning advisory area, hearing to withdraw an area, so if you have a RDA area or a special like a downtown district and you're going to withdraw an area, you have to let them know that you're taking them out of the area so they no longer benefit from whatever reason that special area exists. So if we had an RDA and we felt like some properties weren't of benefit to the RDA, we'd have to let them know if we were going to have a hearing that we were going to remove them from the RDA. That's what that means. And then A is all the other typical things that we already do anyway. Um, annexations, we don't really have to get into that too much. Um, just they're given, they're basically trying to give more discretion to local governments when it comes to annexation and annexation processes. To the point where they used to say, if you annex an area, an island or peninsula, you have to annex the whole thing. This is the first time in my entire career doing this that I've seen them actually soften on that. Because before they were really stringent upon it. If you have an area and you want to annex it, you can't just annex a part of it, you have to annex everybody or you don't annex it. So this is the first time in, geez, I, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen years, twenty years, I don't know how long I've been doing this, but that I've seen them actually offer this, which is really good because you may get a few property owners that want to be part of a city. And then everybody else still says, I like the county, I don't want to be in. Before you had to bind people into the county and they get really irritated with the cities binding them in. Now you can only bring in people you want to bring in and keep those out that want to stay out, which is nice. So that's actually not a bad one, that part of it. Um, and I don't, I don't really know how rural, rural property, why it matters. It probably matters ironically in a rural area, maybe again, a property owner who doesn't want to be in versus a property owner who does and that you're using their property a certain way and give city a little more discretion or the county. Um, I do like the other one, allows a governing body to reconsider a vote. So if something happens and a property owner comes to you later and says, I changed my mind, I don't want to be in it, you can actually reconsider the annexation, whereas before it was definitive, you did it. We went through one, Michelle and I did, it's kind of a process and it's, it's painful. But you can actually, what this allows is a little bit of undoing it if a property owner gets to you in time and says, hey, I changed my mind, I don't want to be in your city. So that's what they're offering is, is that freedom both for the city and the property owner to decide that. And then, and then obviously with a protest, if we have a protest, um, the preference of the petitioner and protesters have equal weight to a boundary commission, that is a rare situation. If we were at war with Ogden over a, a boundary situation or the county, that would come into play. You might have a protest even from a property owner and it would go to a third party arbitrator that would then weigh the request versus the protester's position and it keeps whoever the, the annexing city is out of it so that the boundary commission can weigh in on it. That's basically what it's trying to say, which seems pretty logical anyway, but I don't know what the standard was before. But it's basically, it's changing the standard of judgment for the boundary commission is what that's talking about, all right. Next slide, there you go, there's your break, next year, what do you want to see? They're asking us that kind of in jest because clearly they're already starting. Yeah, they said the state legislature is already starting and they got a land use commission that's already been starting to talk about next steps and how to build on what they are. And I know I went through a lot and then like I said, there are probably more to come, but those are the heavies. And all I can say is we'll keep trying to do the best we can to meet what they want. I don't think that we're typically a, a problem city, I have seen things, I'm not going to get in too much into it. I have seen things sometimes on council where I'm like, don't do that or don't say that or don't treat that developer that way, that's what gets us in trouble, the legislature, but um, same time, you know, I guess it'll be what it'll be depending on how the cities perform to what they keep doing year after year, so. We'll see how this goes, they may bring even more bills in the interim that didn't make it out of uh, the original one, they usually do an interim session sometime in the summer, because there's always something housekeeping wise that, that the governor didn't feel like he got done or legislative leadership didn't feel like they got done, that they bring back, so I may have a oh, here we go now kind of thing coming sometime in June, July, August, we'll see, but and that's where we're at for the time being, so. If you have any other questions, you see something, you read something, let me know, I'll try to stay on it, but there you go, that's what I have, so. Thanks for your time and, and not falling asleep on me, being patient.
Thanks, Mike.
So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate the update. Okay, then a motion would be in order.
I move we adjourn.
I agree.
I second.
I agree.
All in favor?
Yes.
I guess.
That was a long one.
It was a long one.
That did us a short.
That was a lot of stuff.